Today's meeting was noticed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. This commission acts in review and recommending capacity for comprehensive plan amendments, text amendments to the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations Ordinance, rezonings, and plan developments. The commission has decision-making authority on road name change requests, public project reviews, appeals of administrative decisions on final plat and subdivision matters, as well as other matters pursuant to Chapter 29, Title VI, Section 6-29-340 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina as amended. If you wish to speak at today's meeting, you should have filled out the sheet by the door as you came in. I'm Cindy Floyd, I'm Chair of the Commission. To my right, Commissioner Pete Palatos, Luke Morris, Marlena Davis, and Adam McConnell. To my left, David Kent, Warwick Jones, and Susan Cox. Also seated to my right, Commission Attorney Mark Bell. And seated to my left, Joel Evans, Director of Zoning and Planning. Joel, would you please introduce the staff?
Yes, Andrea Mallicent, the Deputy Director of the Zoning and Planning Department. Also, Marshawn Miller. Where is Marshawn?
She's over there.
Oh, there she is. Win Carlisle, he'll be presenting today. Stephanie Ondo and Monica Eustace. And Walt Smalls, the Deputy County Administrator for General Services, is also.
I would like to remind you that in order to get a good recording of the meeting for the minutes, please speak loudly and clearly into your microphones, and please do not talk above one another. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 14, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion and a second?
Two seconds.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Marlena Davis?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay. The next agenda item is a request to rezone Tax Map Number 203-00-00-048 and 053. From the low-density R4 zoning district to the Island Park Place Medical Health and Wellness Village Plan Development, PD 190, to allow for the development of a large-scale medical office park with associated retail and residential uses. Mr. Carlisle.
All right. Thank you, Chair Floyd. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Let me get the presentation up and running. There we go.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, can you hear me? And this is a request to rezone TMS 203 Parcels 48 and 53 from R4 to PD 190, the Island Park Place Medical Village Plan Development. This is the zoning history. The subject properties were zoned AG until the 2001 adoption of the ZLDR, when they were rezoned to the RSL District, which was later renamed R4. In 1999, the county adopted its first comp plan, which included the suburban rural edge that split the county between a rural area and a suburban area. The subject properties were located on the boundary of this edge in the suburban area, while the properties across Betsy Carrison remained in the rural area. This suburban rural edge would eventually become the urban growth boundary as we know it today. The property owner held a planning commission workshop in November of 2021, where Commissioners and community members alike expressed a number of concerns, including lack of sewer capacity, building height, and increased traffic. Many residents were concerned about the scale of the proposed development in this particular area, saying a development with this scale should be located in an existing commercial area or node, such as along Maybank Highway. And then these slides provide details on the PD request that started last year. After the commission recommended disapproval in November of 2023, council considered the request. The original Planning and Public Works Committee meeting was postponed to January so the applicant could engage with the community. In January, the applicant met with community stakeholders and drew up a concessions list, then deferred the PPW meeting until February. In February, the Planning and Public Works Committee recommended disapproval, which council then followed by disapproving PD 187, while also waiving the one-year waiting period and future application fees. In October, the applicant submitted the current application for PD 190. And this is the property location within the county as a whole. And the future land use description of the subject parcels is urban-suburban mixed use. And the urban growth boundary is shown with the purple line coming down Betsy Carrison. And for the current zoning, the subject properties are largely undeveloped, with a 75-foot central electric co-op power line easement running through them. Properties to the north are zone Neighborhood Commercial NC zoning district, and are developed with office buildings housing professional office space. The two parcels were originally combined as TMS 203 Parcel 62, which was approved to be rezoned from low-density suburban RSL to commercial transition CT in 2004. Parcel 203, ending in 62, was subdivided in 2018 to create the two existing lots as office space in the NC zoning district, which is limited to 5,000 square feet of floor area for the buildings. And the CT zoning district was combined with the NC zoning district in 2021. The property to the south is zoned low-density residential, R4. And this is largely undeveloped, apart from the same 75-foot power easement. Properties to the east of the parcel are zoned R4, and are developed with single-family detached homes and manufactured housing. And the property to the east, ending in 053, is zoned PD 27E, Kiowa River Estates Plan Development, and is developed with single-family residences and a golf course. And the subject properties are located in flood zone shaded X. This is aerial view to the north, and again, looking at the aerial view to the south. These are photos of the subject properties, and a photo of the adjacent NC property, and then the property across Betsy Carrison Parkway. And this is a conceptual site plan of the plan development depicting 14 buildings and a parking garage. This is a comparison of land uses between the current zoning, the original PD 187, and then the proposed PD 190. For the current proposal, you can see in red the lesser square footage totals as compared to the original PD proposal. And this reflects the concessions mentioned earlier. Yeah. And also the lesser number of multifamily units. This table compares the dimensional standards between the current R4 zoning and the proposed PD. The R4 standards would apply to any single-family residences, while the PD standards are geared to the proposed mixed-use development. This slide provides an overview of the proposed guidelines for the plan development, and reflects those smaller square footage totals from the concession list. And then this slide shows the changes from the original PD proposal to the current, and included are the reductions in square footage totals, uses, the number of residential units, parking spaces, and wetlands impacts. It also calls for space for a community healthcare clinic, and changes to the phasing schedule. So the applicant did provide responses to the approval criteria. Staff found that criterion A was met. However, staff has found that approval criterion B has not been met due to the scale and existing land use pattern in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development. And criterion C is met as long as the applicant obtains updated letters of coordination. In the staff recommendation, the scale and intensity of the proposed development is incompatible with the existing land use pattern of the area, and is therefore inconsistent with a comprehensive plan, future land use recommendation. Therefore, staff recommends disapproval. However, if the proposed development were to be approved, staff recommends the following conditions: Providing updated letters of coordination from utility and service providers; revised language to state that the accessory structures will be allowed pursuant to Section 6.5.5; revised language to state that building height shall be whichever is less of the stated requirements; provide a minimum lot area and width based on the GO, General Office District; reduce the impervious surface size to 70%; include a maximum building coverage of 40%; remove the statement Standards not addressed shall comply with the GO District; state that the sidewalk in the Betsy Carrison right-of-way will be constructed and inspected and accepted by the county for maintenance prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy; to revise language to state that if the project is not developed under the PD, that the R4 zoning requirements shall apply. And then the last being to revise the parking table to only list required parking for each use based on the ZLDR. And also needed is a sketch plan to show traffic circulation, water and sewer lines, construction entrances, landscape buffer location, and composition. Comments from the public tallied at 321 in opposition to the request, eight in support, and seven general comments. And the request was noticed as required. And can I answer any questions?
Mr. Jones?
I noticed that you changed on red, um, commercial uses. PD 190? PD 190, on the chart that you've got. And down the bottom, you have changed utility for specific purpose of providing sewage service 45,000 square feet. This is opposed to 55,000 square feet in the previous. Why is there a reduction?
I believe it has to do with the amount of area for the septic system overall. And that was... And Andrea, do you have more on?
I would just... That's a question for the applicant to answer. We don't know why they reduced it. So the applicant... When the applicant comes up and speaks, he should be able to address that for you.
I would have thought in the sewage system, more is better rather than less, but what do I know?
Any other questions? Okay, we'll now hear public comments.
Susan McLaughlin?
My name is Susan McLaughlin. I live at 3061 Baywood Drive on Seabrook Island. This Island Park Place Health and Wellness Village project has been before the Planning Commission and County Council before, and the recommendation has always been not to approve this project. A year ago, County Council directed the developer to work with the local community to attempt to garner some support for this project. I live on Seabrook, a community of over 2,000 households adjacent to Kiowa. Anyone exiting our community will drive by this project on a daily basis and will be impacted by the traffic this project generates. To the best of my knowledge, the developer has made no effort to reach out to anyone on Seabrook. To me, this is a statement about his lack of concern about our local community. More importantly, from a medical office building perspective, there is little need for such a facility, as three major medical providers, MUSC, Trident, and Roper, have big plans to bring medical care to Johns Island, including medical offices. Based on the design, I question whether this development will bring any medical care to this area, or is merely a ploy to bring in retail office space, restaurants, and multiple housing units to an area which is mainly rural and residential. A project such as this would be better placed along Maybank Highway, which is the commercial node of Johns Island. Finally, this area, Betsy Carrison, is close to marshes and waterways and is very prone to flooding. Adding a project of this size and allowing the developer to build on two acres of wetlands is only going to make our road flooding worse, especially since 60% of the development consists of impervious surfaces. Nothing has changed since the last time this developer came before the Planning Commission. I encourage you to disapprove this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paul McLaughlin?
Good afternoon. My name is Paul McLaughlin. I live with my wife on 3061 Baywood Drive out on Seabrook Island. Besides agreeing with her, for obviously reasons, I'd like to further elaborate that it's really important that you folks have gone through this process before. And when it was turned down by council, the direction and recommendation of the council was that the developer would reach out to the community and try to work with the community to come up with some revisions that might be satisfactory to us. I'm also a lead facilitator of Preserve Seabrook, which has 500 households and over 800 members, and none of whom have ever been spoken to or spoken to about this project in any way, shape, or form. And that we know that all of those people oppose this project. The other thing I think that's really being missed is two parts. One is the environmental impact on this. The notion of putting a sewer system adjacent to a water system is, I don't know, a very difficult task. I'm not an engineer, but I know under previous circumstances on Johns Island and Seabrook that that issue was really kind of important. I mean, how are you going to deal with waste? Because they're not going to be able to get connected to the rest of the sewer system. And I think that the flooding... We're living... Every time there's road development, we see flooding. And I think that this reflects to the counties' inability to try to help deal with the flooding throughout the county, and putting their money and effort into some other projects that may be of lesser importance to us, as proved recently in the elections. So I would urge you to vote against this, and strongly vote against it, and do whatever else, use whatever other language you might be able to employ to convey to the county council that they should vote against this project. Preserve Seabrook and our members oppose this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colley Farah?
Good afternoon. My name is Colley Farah. I live at 3293 River Road. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Kiowa Conservancy. There are a number, a whole host of reasons why to deny this project again, largely due to the environmental impacts that this will have, and that will be irreversible. Second is that the Charleston County Green Belt Program, ultimately County Council, and the South Carolina Conservation Bank awarded the Kiowa Conservancy millions of dollars to acquire three properties directly across the street that will be preserved in perpetuity. That will be a nature park open to the public. Development like this directly across the street will most definitely impact those well-spent dollars to preserve land and give back to the rural nature of Johns Island. Thank you.
Louise Bennett?
I live at 3205 Resurrection Road, Johns Island. The Island Park Medical Health Wellness Village is unneeded and unwanted. First of all, there are no doctors or specialists guaranteed. This development is not affiliated with MUSC, Roper, or Trident. And MUSC and Trident are actively working on Johns Island to provide medical facilities. A commercial development with 14 buildings, three stories high, parking with impervious surfaces, a parking garage... The development is larger than fresh fields. 12 grand trees will be destroyed, and that will leave few, if any, grand trees on this property. And I'm probably one of the few people, other than the developers, who have walked on most of this property. Most of the trees are smaller sweetgums, pines, and smaller oaks. But if this is accomplished, it will be virtually clear-cut. Two acres of wetlands will be filled, which again is environmentally detrimental. And we in the community would like to see our community remain the same. The Kiowa Conservancy has actively involved in this. As Colley just said, they've purchased 20 acres directly across the street to be preserved, to be open to the public. And Island Park Place will be a blight on our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Hidingsfelder?
My name is Dr. Michael Hidingsfelder. My wife and I live on Two Shell Creek Landing on Kiowa Island. We own property on Kiowa for the last 20 years. I want to give you four reasons why you should not approve this application. First of all, just imagine the size. This building we are all in is smaller than what is planned to be developed, although the size of the property is almost exactly the same, 16 versus 17 acres. Furthermore, where you have parked your car coming to this building today, those are 500 parking spots. That's exactly what is proposed for this, just to get the dimensions right for this development. Second of all, the water quality in our watershed surrounding our islands have deteriorated greatly over the last 10 years. Many of us don't even know that large parts of the Kiowa River and Stono River oyster and shellfish banks have been closed for harvesting by the authorities because of fecal coliforms, as a result of the many septic tanks and fields we already have along the river, particularly on the north part of Johns Island. And this massive development would only add more risk of contamination and pollution for our waters and our wildlife. Number three, over the last couple of weeks, I talked to several physicians to better understand how our healthcare system works. Interestingly enough, we don't have really any independent physicians anymore in this country. Almost everybody that is a physician is actually associated with the large hospitals and healthcare providers like MUSC, Roper, and Trident. So I would really like to know which physicians would be in these buildings if none of them actually really exist that is not associated with the big ones. Maybe we have some physical therapy, a gym, maybe a healthy restaurant that could accomplish their objective, but I think it's a purely disrespectful marketing gig of the developer to sell this to us as a health and wellness center.
Sir, you need to wrap up your remarks.
Last point, if I may. Please also keep in mind, even if you approve, if council approves, the developer would still, as of today, have the right to sell the property to anybody else without any limitations. Please disapprove this planned development. Thank you.
Rich Thomas?
Hi, I'm Rich Thomas. I live at 4360 Betsy Carrison Parkway, which is directly across the road from this proposed development. I probably have a better sense of it than most anybody here, except for Louise. Coming out of my driveway even this afternoon, traffic is moving 60 to 70 miles an hour at that point, be incredibly dangerous. Sometimes I have to wait a minute or two to get out onto Betsy Carrison. The main concern that I have is what it's going to do to the landscape there, both above the ground and below the ground. A septic system that will be handling all the development that was mentioned there, the number of square feet, which did not include, Mr. Jones, the residential part, that's got to go somewhere. The creek, Bohicket Creek, is across the road, Oliver Creek, Kiowa River are just down the road. We don't know what the groundwater looks like, but we know that that septic effluent has to go somewhere. A few months ago, we had a big rain, you know, we get three, four, seven, eight inches. So I walked across the road and I took pictures of the site. And there was water almost up to the edge of the road, two or three feet of water, that that land was absorbing. It wasn't running off, it was being absorbed. It was doing what it's meant to do. That's really important, and the planning staff can talk about that. At the edge of the urban growth boundary here, we want to see things kind of slope off development. This would be like a massive thing plunked right at the edge of the urban growth boundary. And we have just a half mile down the road, a huge commercial area, that this would be perfect to go into. It doesn't belong there. There's a lot of other issues here, and we've talked about them in the past year or two or three, so we'll labor those, but I urge you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
John O. Williams?
Thank you. My name's John Williams, and I reside at 2014 Somerton Court in Panopolis. Madam Chair, Members of Commission, thank you for hosting the meeting. And I'd like to address some of the issues here. Win did a good job of summarizing it, and I was here before you all a year ago, and so I know many of you are familiar with the project. I did want to highlight some of the reductions that were made since that last presentation. When this property was initially planned, it was... The goal was 200,000 square feet, and there was a concept plan for that. But after meetings with the community and different special interest groups, that was reduced to 159,000. And that was the iteration, or the concept, that you all saw last time. Since that time, it has been reduced another 30,000 square feet to 129,000 square feet. So I would just like to highlight that, to let you know that the developer has been cognizant and has listened to the community, and has tried to reduce the scale of this project as much as possible. I would highlight a few issues. One, that it is within the urban growth boundary. I think that's important. And not only has the scale been reduced, but also a phased approach has been incorporated into the document. So it would be developed in four phases, and they would only move on to the next phase once 80% of that phase has been leased or sold. Okay? So that would ensure that there is demand, that there is a use that's being described before additional buildings and additional construction would take place. Parking has been reduced by 94 spaces. One of the... One of the issues was the, the amount of support. And the last time this was presented, there was several hundred persons who, who listed their support of this project. That was not resubmitted with this application. It was, that was my misunderstanding, that it would be resubmitted, and we will have that resubmitted prior to the council meeting, but I did want to highlight that. The CEO of MUSC, Dr. Crowley, has supported this project. And one, just a couple of issues. Stormwater flows obviously cannot exceed pre-development construction. So those flows will not increase, there will not be additional runoff because of this project. We cannot sell this project without any limitations. In fact, that's what we've been spending years drafting and presenting to you all, is the limitations that are on this project. The vast majority of the grade A and grade B grand trees are preserved. In fact, I think all of the grade A trees are preserved, and the vast majority of the grade B trees are preserved. And that was a goal to develop all along, is to preserve as many of the grand trees as possible. This medical healthcare offering really complements this area because it provides an ecosystem that is necessary. We've heard that there are plans for, for other healthcare services, but we haven't seen any of that. And even if a hospital does, does get constructed, what he's looking to do is something very different. These are specialists, these are medical providers, these are essential and necessary offerings for this community. We hope you consider it and provide approval. Thank you.
Mr. Williams? Okay, I think the, well, I'd like to ask some questions, and the other commissioners can too. I noticed you put a sustainable restaurant on here. Can you explain to us what a sustainable restaurant is? Because there have been a lot of questions of the people I'm talking to. We don't know what that means.
Sure. So one of the concerns we heard during the last iteration was that the developer's just going to put fast food restaurants in here. He's trying to get it entitled and get fast food restaurants. And that couldn't be further from the truth. That's, that's not the goal. That's, he truly wants a medical and healthcare complex there. And so in, in trying to narrow the definition, to provide those assurances, and, and to, to create what, or to describe what he truly intends to do there, we use the term sustainable food systems, which would include things like locally grown foods, organic foods, those kinds of things. But it was mainly implemented just to give people assurance that it's not fast food offerings.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Marlena?
I heard you say that Dr. Colley at MUSC is, not has signed up on this project, but is in agreement with it. So, but I've also heard that MUSC is planning their own medical facilities out there. So is this a conflict, or what is, how's that planning out?
Yes, ma'am. This would not be in competition with what MUSC is doing out there. And that's, my, my clients had numerous conversations with Mr. Colley. And again, he has been supportive of this project because it's complemented. It's going to provide those specialist offices. It's going to provide, it's going to provide a lot more than what MUSC is planning to do out there. This certainly isn't a hospital offering. These, these are medical offices and specialists, and it's, and it's in addition to what MUSC is planning to do.
Do you have any documentation from the, from MUSC saying that they are in support of this development?
I believe there was some communication from Mr. Colley. I don't know if that was in the last filing from last time or not. I can, I can ask to obtain that and provide that.
And do you have any interest from any medical people, doctors in particular, that are interested, have shown an interest in sharing this space?
Yes, ma'am. All of the conversations that have been had with medical providers has been very positive. They said, as soon as you get your entitlements, we're ready to move forward. But nobody's going to sign a contract without a guarantee that there's space there.
Anybody else?
Those providers that you mentioned, letters of intent, anything else that you could provide proof of, the fact that there is a date of interest?
Yeah. Again, all the conversations that they've had is they want to see the entitlement, they want to know that there's a project before they, before they sign any kind of documentation.
They're signing, and there's a letter saying, yeah, we're interested. What types of medical providers have you spoken to that have expressed interest?
My, my client has had all of those conversations, but it's all across the board. It's, it's the cardiologist, it's nephrologist, it's, it's, any, any of the specialists that you can imagine. There has, no specialist has been excluded from this, from this list. So it's open to all of them.
So obviously, I see the main entrance off of Betsy Carison, but it looks like there's a entrance south of that that connects to that existing adjacent residential driveway, but shown to remain as dirt. Is that just a service entrance, or would that be a secondary entrance to the?
No, they were required to maintain access for the homes that are to the rear of the property. And so that access is, is just for those residential parcels that are already there. But the, but the sole access component for this park would be the, the main entrance that you see.
Okay. Thanks.
Just to clarify, it may be simple. The square footage has gone down 20%. And the provision, square footage of the utility for sewage has gone down roughly 20%. And I also noticed, though, that dwelling has gone down roughly 30%. Is this just an extrapolation that you've made, that the sewage is hex, and it goes down 20%? Everything goes down 20% for the sewage?
No, sir. What we did is we, we have, our sewer design engineers onsite septic, we gave them this new information based on the updated, these reduced numbers for these, the different square footages and the different dwelling units, and they gave us that figure. They calculated it, and they said, this is what you need. And part of that was due to some of the concerns that we'd heard about the amount of septic that was on site there. It was over an acre, you know, 55,000 square feet. And so, you know, any reductions that could be made in that, we thought would be positively received. And so the amount of sewer area of the property allocated for sewer treatment, wanted, we, we thought it was a good idea to reduce that as much as possible, based on the concerns that we had heard.
Can you tell us the name of the engineer that you used for the septic design, and tell us the type of system that's involved?
His name is Caleb Rogers. He's with, Caleb Rogers. He's with On-Site Septic. And he has, I believe his proposed process is included in the exhibit letters. I believe he's, he could certainly describe it better than I can. But he, he, he has a system designed that will, that will treat these flows. And again, I believe he included it in his, his letter that's in exhibit to this document.
So it's a pretty intense development to have on septic. Why, why this site and not somewhere else that may have access to public water and sewer?
Well, this is the site that the owner has. I mean, this is the one that he owns. And his, his, he lives on Kiowa, and he has a lot of these needs, and his family members have a lot of these needs. And he, he wanted to see medical care provided closer to the community, because we heard time and time again, the, the concerns that people had about making long trips. Many of them have to travel from, from Kiowa, Seabrook, and Johns Island to East Cooper. And the, the issues you can have with the traffic in that commute, and that you have that many people that are having to travel for healthcare, that there is a demand. It's something that he felt personally, it's something that he deals with personally, with him and his family. And it was a goal of his to, to establish this type of park closer to home.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy McKinley?
Oh, excuse me, I do have one more question. Did you go and speak to the community, members of the community, after you were directed to by county council?
We had meetings with them between the last time we presented to the planning commission and the meeting with county council. There have not been any community meetings since that time, but we had a pretty robust session with the community that resulted in the reductions that we're presenting now, the, the 20% reduction in square footage and all of the listed items that you saw that were reduced, such as parking and sewer and all of those items.
So the answer is no, you have not had any community?
There hasn't been one since the last council meeting.
Since the last council meeting? Okay, thank you.
Hey there, I'm Cindy McKinley. I live at 4266 Betsy Carison Parkway. And before I read what I have already written, I did want to comment on a couple of things. I live virtually across the street as well. I have never been contacted by this developer. He has made some changes since that January meeting, but he hasn't made many changes since he's been denied. And those changes were very miniscule. The other thing is, is the way that they're discussing this, they're frequently talking about medical and alluding to MDs and things like that. And most of the people who are, who are in support of this are writing because they're saying, we need a doctor for our heart, we don't want to drive really, really far. But in fact, whenever I listen to what the owner is saying, they're looking for complementary medicine. They're looking for things that are, they've mentioned infrared saunas, chiropractor, acupuncture, which are all valid, but I don't know that those are things that are worth changing everything up for. And when the supporters are talking about what they're looking for, it may not be what these people are going to be putting in their space. And I might read really quickly what I was going to do in two minutes. The property owner has shown little regard for the concerns of the community and has resubmitted virtually the same plans that were denied last spring. The local community continues to stand together in opposition to this facility in this location. In addition to my concerns from last year regarding the inappropriate scale of this, as well as the fact that we have medical facilities that have already broken ground on Freshfields and are getting ready to up on Maybank Highway, I do have some new insights that show that this is not only was a bad plan last year, it's actually worse now, that we see the amount of floodwaters that this property holds. The wetlands that they intend to fill have been flooded for months at a time since January. We have noticed this flooding over the years, but since their plans came to our attention, we've taken more notice of the water levels on the property. It is almost always soggy, and most of the time, it's holding 12 to 15 inches of water. You can just drive by and see this. The increase in heavy rains, higher tides, and more frequent flood events on the island, it would be foolish to fill these wetlands right on the edge of Betsy Carison Parkway, which is surrounded by the Kiowa River and Bohicket Creek. This water would have nowhere to go, and is going to flood the only road that leads to the southern part of Johns Island, Freshfields, and the nearby sea islands, creating a traffic nightmare, not to mention.
Could you please wrap it up now? You're two minutes.
That will pour from a medical septic system into the pristine Bohicket and Kiowa Rivers. Thank you.
Shet McKinley?
Good afternoon. I too live on Betsy Carison Speedway, just down from this proposed development. Just want to emphasize an important point that, that doesn't receive enough emphasis here. The developer wants to change the zoning. He doesn't have the zoning in place, and we're denying him his God-given right to this development. He wants to change the zoning. There should be a high bar, a very high bar, to change the zoning. For instance, if this was a, a medical desert, 50 miles in every direction, not a single MD, OB-GYN, there's no care for, for rural people, that's, that's a high bar. That, that's not the case, as many people have made the case. There's new stuff, there's already stuff in Freshfields, real, real doctors. There's more coming. There's an ER on Seabrook, there's, there's a hospital and an ER coming on Maybank. We're not on a medical, we're not in a medical desert. You know, basically, the developer rolled the dice. He bought this property thinking, eh, I can, I can work this, we can do this, I can change the zoning. But we don't need to bend over backwards to help him win this, win this bet. The high bar just isn't there. We haven't met the high bar. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise Bennett is on here again, but I'm assuming we already did, okay.
I thought I was going to be late.
Okay, got you. All right. I just want to make sure that we're not two of y'all. All right. Richard Van Ada?
I'm Richard Van Ada, and I live in Kiowa River Estates, adjacent to where this new development is supposedly going to go. The fellow who went before Mr. McKinley stole half of what I was going to say relative to, the developer bought this land as speculation, knowing that it was not suited for his development and was not zoned for his development. This is R4 for a reason. The people in Kiowa River Estates live on R4 property, bought their properties based on that. And now would be faced with a neighbor that would have a massive structure next to them, creating huge traffic problems for us. Now, you've heard of NIMBY, not in my backyard. This is our backyard. And it affects not only us, but people coming off of Kiowa. People going, coming back down from Kiowa River Estates, trying to get to Freshfields. It is a huge, out-of-scale, inappropriate development. You've said that before. You sent it to the community, to, and to your council. The council rejected it. I hope they do it again. I hope you emphasize the need that this has to be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for the folks that signed up to speak, so. There were a couple others that you didn't check the box to speak. I'm assuming you didn't. Okay.
All right. The discussion is now closed to the public. Is there a motion and a second from the commission?
We have to deny.
Second.
We have a motion for denial and a second. Any discussion, questions, comments?
I thought the comments from the public were very good. I thought I should say what I would highlight, but I find that would be rather difficult because all of them, all of the comments made, made sense. I particularly feel about the rezoning. I mean, yes, this is a massive change from R4. And the R4 is more, was more appropriate than the PUD. And the gentleman that spoke about the scale of the development, comparing it to this building and lot, I thought was rather interesting. So that I just felt I should make a comment as a view of the fact that I made the recommendation.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Luke?
I was going to echo that. I think that the public comments were great. One of the biggest things for me was that this is so car-centric and so massive in scale for the location that it is to the urban growth boundary. And I believe that that's actually in the comprehensive plan, the intent for gradient towards that end. So I agree with staff's assessment on this, and honestly, the, the public's as well.
Anybody else?
Anyway, whatever anyone said, this sounds like an environmental nightmare. And it does not sound like it is in keeping. I agree with staff with the comprehensive plan. We haven't seen letters of intent from anyone who's interested in, in renting here. There's still no definition of what a sustainable restaurant is. No further word on what kind of septic would be required for this kind of a massive development. And the amount of impervious surface alone and the filling of wetlands, I think, would be a huge problem for, it's going to continue to be a problem for all of us in the Charleston County area if we continue to allow trees to be clear-cut and land to be paved. So I agree with staff, not in keeping, and I hope we'll say no.
All right. Want to call the roll?
Commissioner Marlena Davis?
Well, maybe we should say, if you vote yes, then you're voting to deny. Everybody's clear about that?
Commissioner Marlena Davis?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Sorry.
Mr. Jones?
I'd like to make another motion, but maybe you need to do something else. Wrap up? No? Okay.
The ayes have it, the motion passed.
Okay. I would like to make another motion. If this application is approved by council, then we would request that the council, that the council consider the recommendations and conditions recommended by the staff for this project.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. So the motion is, although we have recommended denial, if council decides to go forward with this, that they would consider the conditions and the recommendations of the staff.
Okay. Commissioner Marlena Davis?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay, the motion passes. All right. County council will hear this request at their public hearing December 10th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in council chambers. And again, here at their December 19th, 2024 Planning and Public Works Committee meeting at 5:00 PM. The request must then undergo three readings for approval at council's discretion. The next agenda item is approval of the 2025 Planning Commission meeting schedule. Is there a motion and a second from the commission?
Move to approve.
Need a second? Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Staff?
Commissioner Marlena Davis?
Wait a minute. Do we have the, can we see the meeting schedule?
It's, it's in your packet, but we can pull it up if you'd like.
Oh, I didn't see.
It's in a different.
Oh, okay. Wait a minute. Can I get a done?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're still in the first.
Yeah. Proposed meeting schedule, okay. All right.
Is the reason why we're being at noon on the 10th for education?
Yes, March 10th. That's our annual meeting. And we'll do the voting for the officers, and there'll be a training session for CEUs and
And we'll provide lunch.
And we, we do provide lunch. Little, those little nap things, I think.
Indigestible.
We'll get two packs for everybody. No, I think there's actual lunch involved.
We have the lunch, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So.
Anybody else besides me?
I do like that you're sending out a Gmail calendar invite, which is nice.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thanks, Stephanie.
Stephanie.
Did I do that?
Thanks somebody in my office.
Somebody did it. Thank you.
Typically, we have a meeting or two, like for this month, that's delayed by a holiday that's
Yes, correct. So it's usually the first Monday of every month. That's where our default meeting will be. If it's not the first Monday of the month, it's because it's conflicting with
Second Monday.
Second, second, gotta get busy. Second Monday, if you don't see it as the second Monday of the month in here, then it's because it conflicts with the holiday. So it looks like
I think they're all seconds.
They're all seconds this time around. It's just the way that the calendar rolled this year, in 2025. So, yeah, we are on the second, it looks like, for every month next year. That's the first time that's happened, I think, that I can remember. But anyway.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Commissioner Marlena Davis?
Aye again.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Very agreeable.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay. Last item on the agenda is the staff did not receive any complete applications for the December 9th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, but the commission liked to cancel the December 9th Planning Commission. And do we need a motion on that, Mark?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll.
Commissioner Marlena Davis?
Aye.
Chair Floyd?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Vice Chair Palatos?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I just wanted to say that everyone in the planning commission has completed all their required training, which is, yes.
First.
Which is a first, I think.
At this time.
At this time, right. Yeah. It's a requirement every year, at this time, right. We've had some people rush in and at the, at the end of December training. But that pays off because if that wasn't the case, we would have had a December meeting and everyone would have training. So now, keeping up with your training on your own pays off. You get a meeting off, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no further business, this meeting of the Charleston County Planning Commission stands adjourned. The Planning Commission will hold its next regularly scheduled meeting in January.
January, yep. We will see everyone in 2025.
January 13th at 2:00 PM.
Yes.
Same salary.
You still get the same salary for that meeting that we don't get. That's true. Yes.